We're going to get started here in just a minute. We're having some computer difficulties, so we're going to try and reboot our system, so it may take just a few minutes. So we'll get started here just shortly. Test one, two. There we go. Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the City Council for November 1st, 2010, to order. First thing on the agenda, as always, is the roll call and the determination of the quorum. If you would, please.
Peterson. Wyffenbach. Davis. Adcock. Kroger. Costello.
Here.
Quaker. Wa. Brown. Mason.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you, Charlene. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone or a pager, if you please turn that off or turn it to the vibrate mode. Also, if you do need to take a phone call, we would please ask that you go out into the hallway. With that, also, if you wish to speak on any issue on the agenda, we also have speaker request forms. They look like this. They're to your left or right, over on the media table. Please fill that out and then hand that down to Charlene at the end, and she'll make sure that it gets up to us up here. And that way, as we make our way down the agenda, we'll make sure we do not overlook you. Let's see. If everyone will please rise for the invocation, it's Pastor Ron McLaughlin here.
Yes, sir.
From the Hills, Ephrill Church. If everyone will please rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, Pastor. Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this beautiful night. We praise you for being an almighty God and an all-knowing God. I thank you, Father, for allowing us to live where we live. I thank you for this city. I thank you for those that are willing to serve and lead in this capacity, God. I thank you for men and women as such. And as I see the men in uniform, God, I thank you for the men and women that protect these cities and this country as well. So, God, we just give you this night, and we ask that you guide and lead and direct, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Pastor. Next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I do have a couple additions that we do need to add. I have a 99A, which is the addition of a warp, a waiver of rights protest. Also, a 100A, which is another warp. There's also a request to move item number 67 to immediately follow item 100, and move item number 68 to immediately follow item 101. And then Alderman Kroger would like to add a 96A, which is an update on the second-floor working committee. Additional items? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just an update on the Christmas lights and a thank you, please.
Okay. Christmas lights. Very good. Any additional items? Please turn on your light. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you.
Mic, please.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to add a discussion on the holiday cards and just to discuss that.
Okay, we'll call that 96C. Okay, any additional items? So far, what we have is the addition of a 99A, which is a warp, a 100A, which is also a warp, moving item number 67 to immediately follow item number 100, moving item number 68 to immediately follow 101, the addition of a 96A, which is a second-floor working group update, a 96B, which is Christmas lights, and 96C is holiday Christmas cards, postcards. Any additional items to be added to the agenda? If not, the chair will look for a motion with the additions, please. We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the approval of the minutes. Chair will look for a motion to approve the October 12th, 2010 special council meeting and the October 18th, 2010 regular council meeting. We have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes. This is for the October 12th special council meeting and the October 18th regular council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to awards and recognitions, and where's Mike? Why don't you go and come on up, Mike? And we'll also ask Lieutenant Dick Carlson and also Lieutenant Colonel, is it Selcher? Am I close?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Why don't you go ahead and come up here. There we go. Well, we have a special award and recognition tonight, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike and Lieutenant Colonel, and they're going to actually tell us about all the great things that Lieutenant Carlson's been doing. So with that, Lieutenant Colonel?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council members. What we're here to do tonight is, for those of you who don't know, the 82nd Civil Support Team is part of the South Dakota National Guard, and we're a hazmat specialty team to combat terrorism. Nick here has done quite a bit of work in training with us, and we're just here to show some appreciation in front of his peers and his superiors of how much we appreciate what he's done for us.
Very good.
Sir. On behalf of the 82nd Weapons of Mass Destruction Civil Support Team, I would like to take this time to express my personal appreciation for Lieutenant Carlson's untiring efforts in support of joint, inter-agency, and section-level training. Lieutenant Carlson's desire for quality training was evident during the planning and execution of the April 1st, 2010 inter-agency training event involving the 82nd Survey Section and the Rapid City Fire Department hazmat team. This opportunity was vital, as it allowed for both teams to meet and train at a professional level. His dedication led to a successful June 17 through 19, 2010, inter-agency training event involving the 101st CST from Idaho and the Rapid City Fire Department. This event was significant, as it allowed the Rapid City Fire Department and hazmat team to train alongside a CST from another state. Lieutenant Carlson's professionalism attributed to the successful planning and execution of the August 26, 2010 decontamination team. This training opportunity allowed both teams to exercise on a level that fosters cooperativeness and integration of our capabilities, forming a critical relationship required during a real-world incident. His passion for our community and its response preparedness stood out, as he coordinated the October 18 through 22, 2010 intermediate and advanced Incident Command System classes in the interest of the National Incident Management System, Incident Command System. The success of this training will foster a stronger understanding and working relationship between all agencies involved. Again, we extend our gratitude for your support. Your professionalism brings great credit upon yourself, the Rapid City Fire Department, the City of Rapid City, and the State of South Dakota. A copy of this memorandum will be forwarded to your department for inclusion in your personnel file. Signed, Lieutenant Colonel James S. Selcher, Field Artillery, South Dakota Army National Guard, commanding. Thank you.
Just real quick, a couple of notes. First off, thank you guys for bringing this award to my attention, as well as the city's. It's a great opportunity for us to recognize one of our best company officers in the fire department. Interestingly enough, if we had a large-scale hazardous materials incident in Rapid City or in this region or county or so on, our hazmat team has limited capabilities. We do very well for a municipality our size. However, there are incidents out there that may overwhelm the local emergency responders. That's where these gentlemen come into play. We actually are benefited to have their support team here in Rapid City, based out at the guard camp. So we have throughout efforts like Nick's and other members at the department, as well as their team, have really worked to maintain some joint training exercises and foster really good relationships, so we can help each other out. And that's why they're here, is to really help the locals out if we should have a large-scale hazmat incident. So thank you guys for doing what you do. And then with Nick here, Nick is one of our hard chargers. The guy leads our training division with passion, does a number of activities like he's being recognized for tonight. And with that, I just want to personally thank him for everything he does for the department, for me, and for the city of Rapid City. And again, Nick is definitely a hard charger for that. Interestingly enough, Nick will be promoted here in the next couple of months from the rank of lieutenant to captain. And the reason we do that, we actually have a pending retirement coming up, but it's really based upon Nick's performance and what he does for the department and for the city. So with that, we can also kind of wish him a congratulations a couple months earlier, as he'll be promoted to captain. So with that, thanks again, Nick, and I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you coming. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the awards and recognitions. We're on to the general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous vote of the council members present. We do have two speaker request forms, and the first one is Patty Martenson. So Patty, first of all, welcome back. For those of you who didn't know, Patty served on the City Council. And so Patty, there again, if you would identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours. And just a reminder, everyone, during this period and also during all of our public comment periods, we do allow two minutes. So if you just watch the lights, when it turns yellow, you'll have about 30 seconds. Patty?
Yes, Patty, I'm Patty Martenson from Rapid City, South Dakota. Thank you, Mayor and council members. On November 8th, you will be taking up the final measurements for the next round of 2012. I thank the efforts of all the citizens who served on the review committee for Vision 2012 and the council members who served under their liaisons. I know such decisions are not easy. I would like to request that the council reconsider the Vision 2012 project, the Adult Resource and Social Center. The Adult Resource Center is the only project recommended by the citizen committee that has not received any funding whatsoever. I believe the Adult Social Center has demonstrated its viability, its benefits to the city, as well as to the benefits of the community. I believe it deserves additional consideration and funding. Thank you. Now I have to go out and get out the vote.
Very good. Very good, Patty. We also have a speaker request form from Pat Roseland. There again, Pat, if you please identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I am Pat Roseland, and I'm speaking as a member of the Mount Rushmore Road Group. The Mount Rushmore Road Group was organized five years ago with a small group of business owners on Mount Rushmore Road, and today includes most of the businesses on Mount Rushmore Road. Mount Rushmore Road Group's mission is to improve safety, aesthetics, and to decrease clutter along Mount Rushmore Road. We would like to keep Mount Rushmore Road a viable corridor for the community and visitors. Mount Rushmore Road is a gateway to Mount Rushmore, as you well know, as well as a business and historic destination for residents and visitors. Mount Rushmore Road Group would like to encourage a safe, clean, and secure neighborhood. The keys to success of the Mount Rushmore Road Group are the participation of its membership, involvement from surrounding neighborhoods, including West Boulevard Historic District, as well as cooperation from governmental and chamber of commerce entities. The group participates in several projects, including flower power, nutcrackers that come out at Christmas, and currently the Wilson Park lighting ceremony, which is set for Tuesday, November 23rd. KOTA will have live coverage of the lighting ceremony, and we hope that Mayor Hanks and the City Council will join us in turning on the lights. We plan to have hot chocolate and other goodies for those who are privileged to attend. Mount Rushmore Road will be going through a reconstruction in 2011, hopefully to fulfill part of what our mission statement is. And the Mount Rushmore Road Group would like to thank publicly the mayor and the City Council for the $2 million in support of the beautification portion of the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. And I know I'm going to be there for the lighting ceremony, and I encourage all the council members to come. Last year, I remember, they had quite the crowd, and the hot chocolate was very good. Pat, can you give us the dates?
November 23rd.
November 23rd. And it's usually, was that right at 5:30, wasn't it? Okay. Very good. I do not have any additional speaker request forms. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak to any issue not on the agenda? Want to make sure we cover all of the bases here. If not, we're on to the non-public hearing items. These are items 1 through 97 inclusive. 1 through 97 inclusive. The chair will look for a motion to open the public comment period on 1 through 71 inclusive. 1 through 71. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. I have no speaker request forms. Let's see here. I do have one speaker request form for item 67, but we moved that, and so we'll actually be taking the public comment period on that later on. So Doug, I'll let you know when the time to bring that up.
I also have a request form for 70, and I...
Right.
That's coming later as well?
Yes, we moved, oh, no, I'm sorry. Item number 70, we did not move. So this would be the time to speak to item number 70.
Item number 70 is on the continue agenda, because there was one item, one of the stipulations that had not been met as of Wednesday at 4 o'clock. Friday morning, the City Engineers Office did approve our submittal on that stipulation number three, and so I'd like it moved to the consent calendar for approval.
Okay, very good. We do have a note here that Marsh is asking to have item number 70 pulled from the consent calendar, so it can be taken up. Otherwise, it would be just continued. Okay? Any additional speaker, any other speakers for items 1 through 71 inclusive? If not, the chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the consent items. These are items 1 through 61 inclusive. 1 through 61 inclusive. Does anyone wish to have any of these items pulled from the consent calendar? 1 through 61 inclusive. If so, please turn on your light. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. Item number 50, thank you. Any additional items to be pulled from the consent calendar? We're dealing with items 1 through 67. Let's go to Pauline.
Number 51, please.
Item number 51, very good. Any additional items? So far, we're going to pull items 50 and 51 from the consent calendar. Any additional items? If not, the chair will look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 1 through 61 inclusive, with the exception of item 50 and 51.
So moved.
Oh, go ahead, Sam. Okay, item 59. Was that all right with the motion? The motion on the floor would be to approve the consent calendar 1 through 61, with the exception of 50, 51, and 59. Okay? And that was all right with the seconder? Who was the seconder? Okay? Charlene, you got both that?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So the motion on the floor is to approve the consent calendar, items 1 through 61 inclusive, with the exception of 50, 51, and 59. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number 50, which is an item from Public Works Committee, so we will go to Alderman Sam Quaker. You can read that in, please. Oh, mic, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 50 is to acknowledge the report update on investigating internal auditing. I'll move to acknowledge the report, and then I have a question.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motions. Go to Alderman Quaker.
Thank you. First of all, I want to use this opportunity to thank Alderman Mason for bringing this important topic forward into the committee the other day. And I would, a motion to acknowledge really isn't a motion to direct, and what I'm wondering is, what is the next step on implementing auditing controls?
I think I can answer that. I think there is a meeting set for tomorrow. Where'd Pauline go? We have a meeting set between Mr. Mason and the folks down in finance to actually look at options tomorrow morning. Is that correct? 8:30 tomorrow morning. So it'll be coming back.
Thank you very much. So would it be better to continue this for two weeks?
Not necessarily. This is a report. Any recommendation would actually have to come back and probably take a different form.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mason, did you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you. The reason I brought this up is more for information purposes, just to keep the public aware that I'm still investigating this. And as the mayor pointed out, I'm going to be doing some research with our finance department tomorrow and probably ongoing for a while, just to look at different options on how we can structure this and get it going. But I just want to clarify what's going on and just update. But I just want to clarify what's going on, and just update where we're at currently. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the report. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I guess I'm interested as well, when you look this up, on the process and procedure of those different auditing resources that we have, that we can use, and also, if we're going to have a meeting sometime here in November, it would be nice to kind of know those, some of those processes of how, if we want to, you know, save cash flow, or how we can do different things with our auditing system. So I too will be interested in the results on this, so thank you for moving forward with this.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 51, Deb, could you please read that in? This is from our Legal and Finance Committee, and Deb chairs our Legal and Finance Committee.
51 is to acknowledge 2009 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR, and I'll yield the floor to Ms. Pauline.
Let's get a motion on the floor real quick, if we could, please.
Moving now, second.
Okay, we have a motion, second to acknowledge. With that, let's go to Pauline, our city finance officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that Casey Peterson has completed the 2009 CAFR for us. Again, this is their final year in our agreement, and I want to publicly thank them for doing a good job on this. And I just wanted to let you know, too, that if you have any questions, Eider Boudal, the head, the lead on the project, is here in the audience if you have any specific questions. I know at Legal and Finance, I pointed out that there are some findings, as we've had in the past, and we have looked at those. We are working on correcting those, so that we can get rid of those in the future.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number 59, Alderwoman, Hadcock, could you please read that in?
59 is Recertify City of Rapid City DOT Drug Alcohol Testing Policy, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I think page one is fairly self-explanatory, but it does talk about the addition of positions to Appendix B, but I'm not really sure which positions were added that would be subject to the testing. Do we have that information readily available?
Let's see, I do not see Keith here. This would be Keith Lesfrenz. Kevin, can you address that?
I don't have it readily available. If you want to bump this back on the agenda, I could get it for you real quick and report back later in the meeting, if you'd like.
Kevin, can you just explain what's driving, sorry, the pun. Can you just explain why this is on the agenda?
Sure. It's largely as a result of changes in the federal law, adding MDMA as another drug that is tasked for under the federal DOT guidelines.
Further discussion, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
If I could ask Kevin a question?
Sure, go ahead, please.
We had to ask Keith the other day about drug testing for political leaders on council and mayor, and he was going to come back with what he thought on that, or maybe ask Jason on, if we wanted to move forward on that, what would be that policy and procedure that we would move forward on?
Okay, I'm going to go to Jason Green. Little bit off topic, but sorry, let's get an answer for that.
You'd have to amend the United States Constitution.
Whoa, can you turn your mic on?
[laughing].
There you go.
You'd have to amend the United States Constitution to do that. There's a Supreme Court case virtually directly on point. Can't be done.
The politicians are different?
Yes.
Wow. Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you. Kevin, if you could just let me know what positions were added. I don't need to know right now. I don't see anything that would cause me to vote against it, but I appreciate the explanation of why this came forward. If you could just let me know which positions were added later. I don't think we need to continue this.
Okay, I'll follow up with an email to you.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We're on to the continued consent calendar. This is item 62 through 71. 62 through 71. Chair would ask if there's any items that need to be pulled from the continued consent items, and so far, Marcia, you have 67, 68, which we did move, so they're actually later in the agenda, and item number 70. Is that correct?
Correct.
Additional items that anyone would like to have pulled from the continued consent Not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the continued consent calendar, items 62 through 71, per the recommendations on the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Let's see, that gets us to item number 70. Is that correct, Marcia?
Yes, it is.
Deb, would you please read that in for us? Item number 70.
Thank you, Mayor. Request by Spurlock Consulting Incorporated for Clint Ackman for preliminary plat for Track A Prairie Meadow subdivision located northeast of the intersection of County Road and West Nike Road, and I move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Discussion on that motion, let's go to Marcia Elkins.
As noted on the dais, there's a document from the public work staff. They're recommending that stipulation number three be struck, because this is actually located outside of that floodplain area, so if we could approve it with revised stipulation number three being struck.
That's what I say. Thank you.
Okay, is that right with the seconder? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve with revised stipulations. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the continued consent items. We're on to the non-consent items, items 72 through 97, and the chair would look for a motion to open the public comment periods, since the items 72 through 97 include, please.
I'll move.
We have a motion, second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I do have a speaker request form on item number 79 from Courtney Montgomery, and Mr. Montgomery, if you would come up and, whoa, I'm sorry, Courtney's a female. My apologies. Courtney, if you'd please identify yourself, and then the floor is yours, and just keep in mind, we do have a two-minute, so if you watch the lights, if it turns yellow, that means you have about 30 seconds left.
Okay.
Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Courtney Montgomery, and I am representing 3L LLC. My sisters and I are in this business together, and we just purchased some property at an absolute auction 10 days ago. We haven't even closed yet. The closing is open-ended right now. We're not quite sure when it's actually going to happen, but I am here to ask for continuance on the item number 79. We just, we purchased, the purchase includes 12 plats on Gold Street, and as we're trying to figure out what we want to do with the property and what we would like to, how we'd like to spend our investment, we just are trying to get our hands around everything and don't know much about this item number 79. So a continuance for maybe after the holidays, at least, would be very helpful for us.
Thank you. Any, let's see, that was item number 79. I do also have, let's see, nope, that would be the only speaker request form I have. Mr. Spurlock, you have items 100, 67, 100, and 118 still, so. Okay? Very good. I do not have any additional speaker request forms on items 72 through 97. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak to these items? Not, the chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period, and item 72 through 97 inclusive.
No movement. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're on to ordinances, item number 72. Alderwoman Hadcock, if you would, please.
72 is second reading ordinance number 5676, an ordinance amending the temporary use regulations in Chapter 17.50 of the Rapid City Municipal Code with the proposed revision. I approve with revised revisions.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval with revisions. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 73, please.
73 is second reading of ordinance number 5677, an ordinance amending the central business zoning district by adding other temporary seasonal and continuous retail business of structure as a permitted use in Chapter 17.16.020 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. This is second reading of ordinance number 5677, item number 73. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 74, please.
74 is second reading ordinance number 5678, an ordinance amending the general commercial zoning district by adding other temporary seasonal and continual retail business or structure as permitted use of Chapter 17.18.020, and removing seasonal and continuous retail business or structure as a conditional use in Chapter 17.18.030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval, second reading of ordinance number 5678, item number 74. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 75, please.
75 is second reading of ordinance number 5679, an ordinance amending the neighborhood commercial zoning district by adding other temporary retail business or structure as permitted use in Chapter 17.20.020 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, the second reading of number 50, ordinance number 5679, item number 75. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 76, please.
76 is second reading of ordinance number 5680, an ordinance amending the SC1 Neighborhood Shopping Center Zoning District by adding other temporary seasonal and continual retail business or structure as permitted use to Chapter 17.30.020, and removing seasonal and continual retail business or structure as a conditional use in Chapter 17.30.030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Whoa. Okay, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Marcia, if you could just speak to this item and the next, probably at the same time, is fine. Can you just help us understand and the community understand, just so we're all on the same page, what's driving this?
Marcia?
Thank you. Staff went back and looked at the temporary uses in an attempt to streamline the process and identify the various districts in which they're allowed. We went through and made revisions, took this to the planning commission, and they've recommended approval. There's, you can tell, there are items 72 through 78 tonight that are all related ordinances. In some cases, we've extended the timeframe that people could have these temporary uses, and again, made sure that we addressed all the zoning districts, so that there was not a question on the districts in which these would be allowed. So that's what's driving this request, and if you have any questions, I'll try to address those.
So it'd be like a farmer's market, or a greenhouse, or...
If I might, the farmer's market is a little different. There's a specific exception in the code that addresses that, and that takes the council to make that determination. But greenhouses, coffee huts, more typically what we see is the pop-up tents associated with maybe a convention having some special events and something like that. The original requests came from some discussions, as we met with the folks that own the Rapid City, and they were looking at some special events tied with various conventions that were being to town, and so we felt it was appropriate to go back and look at all the ordinances and address them throughout the districts. So that's why there's the number of ordinances on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Very good. Well, Sean, the floor is for approval, dealing with item number 76, which is second reading of ordinance number 5680. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 77, please.
77 is the second reading of ordinance number 5681, an ordinance amending the SC2 Neighborhood Shopping Center District by adding other temporary seasonal and continuous retail business or structure as permitted use to Chapter 17.32.020, and removing seasonal and continual retail business or structure as conditional use in Chapter 17.32.030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval of reading of item number 77, which is second reading of ordinance number 5681. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 78, please.
78 is second reading of ordinance number 5682, an ordinance amending the Civic Center Zoning District by adding other temporary retail business or structure as a permitted use in Chapter 17.48.020 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval, item number 78, which is second reading of ordinance number 5682. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item 79, please.
79 is second reading of ordinance number 5683, an ordinance to establish the AmHill Overlay Zoning District by adding Chapter 17.64 to the Title 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
If that's okay, I'd like to ask Ms. Courtney some questions on why the continuance on this, and what would that do if we, and why we would need to continue because of this overlay.
Hey. Go ahead and ask your, Deb. Ms. Montgomery, do you understand what she was asking?
Yes.
Okay, if you'd like to respond, please.
Okay. You know, I, seeing that we just, this is the first time that we've gotten into any of this sort of investment, we, it was an absolute auction, the price was right, and so as we're learning how to go through the process of developing such a parcel of land, we just, I'm not opposed to it, neither nor my sisters, we just would like some more time to understand what this, what the zoning would do to, if we decided to develop, and pulling permits, and in building, just kind of what, we're just trying to understand it, and I don't right now, I don't know much about it. So considering that we haven't even closed, it just would be helpful for us in our new venture.
I appreciate that, Ms. Courtney. We do have a, Marcia Elkins, who's with our growth management, maybe we could do a little bit of explanation of how this might affect them, or might not, Marcia, because it seems like they could come in and get a little bit of training from your department on some of this, that would, given them understanding in how this would or wouldn't affect them by what the purchase of this property just was.
Marcia?
Again, the AmHill overlay came forward as a result of some of the concerns from the neighborhood, particularly as it resulted to apartment complexes. The neighbors had no objection to single-family and duplexes being constructed in the area, but they were concerned with those larger complexes that had been occurring in the neighborhood. And so after a long public input process and a number of neighborhood meetings that we started up again this fall, that was the overlay projected and taken back out to the neighborhood. And again, it addresses the, the fact that any units four and above would have to go through a plan development process. There are some additional setbacks for the larger structures, there are some requirements to make sure that utilities and infrastructure is in place and again, it provides for a public input through the process. This overlay district also had a requirement that limited the location of parking lots for those larger structures in front yards, that was one of the concerns that was brought forward from the neighborhood. So, that's kind of the issues that have been identified in the area and again, it came in as a result of concerns from the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Marcia. Ms. Courtney, how many parcels did you buy in this neighborhood?
Twelve.
And how much land would that acreage, would that be?
I believe it's just over one acre, it's not much, there's, it's all on Gold Street and they're all adjacent except for one small parcel which is on, on the other there, I believe on the east side of the street and so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
At this point, they've been working on this for a while and it seems like if, if you come in, they can give you a little bit of training on, on how that process and procedure works. It sounds like you're affected by this, but at this case, they've been working on this with the neighbors for a very long time, so they will probably move forward with this, but hopefully with the understanding that you can come in and, and get a little bit of training from Marcia and her group and, and see how that works.
Right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval, we're dealing with item number seventy-nine, which is second reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-three. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman, Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one more question for Marcia Elkins, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
Marcia, there are other zoning overlay districts in Rapid City and have those been amended since they were first, or since their inception?
Marcia?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, is it possible to amend any overlay districts as time goes on?
Certainly, they can be amended in the same process that they were created.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes, item number eighty, please.
Number eighty is first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-six, an ordinance to provide free parking at certain times in the leased parking zone by amending subsection ten point four four point zero one zero C of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? I'm going to go to Jason Green, just to make sure, did we get, did you have a chance to look at the language and make sure that we're right as far as the holiday language? Mr. Green?
Yeah, I briefly reviewed it before the meeting tonight, I think it's okay and we'll certainly have the opportunity to give it a thorough review before our second reading, but I'm fairly confident it's the way it should be.
Yep, very good. Any further discussion? Dealing with item number eighty, first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-six. See no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes, item number eighty-one, please.
One is first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-five, an ordinance adjusting rate charges on onsite wastewater systems permits and extending the length of permits by amending section thirteen point zero nine point eight zero zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, we're dealing with item number eighty-one, which is first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-five. Discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman, Deb Hadcock.
Robert Ellis, if you would, for the general public, do a brief, kind of like a briefing like we did at legal and finance, just for people to get a general understanding of the changes and why those changes came about.
Let's go to Robert Ellis, Public Works Director.
Yeah, this ordinance amendment will actually do three different things with permitting. Probably the most substantial is our three-year permitting requirement that we have now for onsite systems. That is a hundred and twenty-five dollars every three years, that will go to twenty dollars every six years. And then for new construction inspection of septic tanks, our current fees are a hundred and fifty dollars for that and that would go to three hundred dollars, so that fee would actually increase. And then also repair inspections would go from a hundred and twenty-five dollars to three hundred dollars. What we're doing here is trying to create equity consistency and reduce confusion out there for people that live within the county, within the city, we just want to mirror our two ordinances exactly so that there's a play, a fair playing field across the board.
Yep, thank you. Alderman Hadcock, you still have the floor, Mayor.
I just appreciate you bringing this forward, just for the general public to know that the changes are coming about and we are just mirroring because we are controlling, if I'm correct, the one-mile limit. There's a three-mile limit and then there's a one-mile limit for septic systems, so I think it's good that this came about, that we are doing the same thing as the county so we don't have any crossing of funds and different stuff where we are being told that ours is too much or theirs, it's just consistent, so I appreciate that. Robert and your group and Louis Arwelo, who is just awesome in this field, we appreciate him very much, thank you.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval, we're dealing with item number eighty-one, first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-five, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes, item number eighty-two, please.
Eighty-two is second reading of ordinance number fifty-six seventy-five, an ordinance established in a one-hundred-foot buffer zone between the malt beverage retail establishment with video lottery, and I move denial.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? None, chair will look for another motion. Move to continue. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue. Discussion on the continuation motion, please, let's try and limit it to the continuation motion. Any discussion on that? Are, are the pads not working? Okay, there we go. Let's go to Alderman, Deb Hadcock.
Just an explanation on why the continuance at this point, thank you.
Okay, who made the motion? Okay, Mr. Davis, did you, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there was some discussion at legal and finance as to the restaurant licenses and where we may be creating an, an ordinance that may have a very limited impact on the buffer. And basically what we were looking at with continuing is to give the city attorney's office time to come back to us with what the structure of the restaurant license is so that we all know that the ordinance that we pass or choose not to pass does in fact create a buffer or doesn't create a buffer and doesn't just create another loophole. It's really the, the major concern that we don't go through the motions of passing an ordinance and simply have passed a loophole instead.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you, Mayor, for that.
Thank you.
Explanation.
Just for a point of clarification of the motion maker, you moved to continue, we do need a date specific, do you want to take it back to legal and finance or do you want to continue for two weeks to the next council meeting? Okay, so everyone clear in the motion, the motion on the floor is to send this back to legal and finance. Okay, now just so you know, that's a little bit different than a continuation motion, is everyone okay with that? Okay, there's no objection, very good. Motion on the floor is to send this back to legal and finance. Any further discussion? Seeing no lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, item number eighty-three, please.
Eighty-three is first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-four, an ordinance regarding supplemental appropriation number one for 2011, and I move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval, any discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker. Oh, mic, please.
And this item has a ninety-seven thousand dollar line item for other professional services and twenty-three thousand dollars for supplies and materials. What is the purpose of these two items and for which department is this for?
This, I'm going to bring Barb Garcia up. And Pauline will give her a hand. What it is, it's a reentry program, so. Barb, can you pull, yeah, there you go, right in front of the mics. Barb Garcia is our community development coordinator.
Yes, the ninety-seven that you're talking about is the professional services, these are actual services out to clients, they are not funds that we can use for our own supplies. It's like haircuts, counseling, mental health counseling, physical appointments for physical disabilities, those types of appointments.
Mr. Quaker, you have the floor, sir.
It's not professional services in the sense of using to hire consultants or people to, it's, it's directly for the clients of the program?
Under the state.
It's like a vocational rehabilitation program, is that basically what it is?
Right. Under the state grant, they call it consultants when we contract with BMS to do mental health services for our clients and they call it a consultant if we send them to community health and a, a medical health professional meets with them. Under their grant, that's the terminology they use, but it's not for bringing in a consultant from another state to do anything for us, this is strictly direct services to the client.
So, none of, none of the ninety-seven thousand dollars and none of the twenty-three thousand dollars goes to the, to the city for the assistance of running the program, it's only for the, the clients that would be benefiting from the program?
That's correct. Some of the different monies that we're using are flexible funds for haircuts, purchases of bicycles, transportation tickets, we have transitional housing to help pay for their rent deposits, utility deposits and temporary rent for one or two months until their paychecks start coming in. We have twenty thousand for a mentorship to do training for mentors to work with them. There's five thousand that's employability that goes to, we work with the Department of Labor to do some job training skills for them.
And this money, Barb, is this coming from general funds or this is coming from?
This is directly from the Second Chance Act grant. There are no general funds in this hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar budget.
State funding.
I'm sorry?
State funding, it's a pass-through.
Right.
Okay, Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval of first reading of ordinance number fifty-six eighty-four. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number eighty-four, please.
Eighty-four is the first reading of ordinance number fifty-six ninety-two, an ordinance amending seventeen point oh six of the chapter seventeen of Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for rezoning from no-use district to low-density residential district located at twenty-nine hundred South Valley Drive, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, this is first reading of ordinance number fifty-six ninety-two, which is a rezoning at twenty-nine ninety South Valley Drive. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes, item eighty-five, please.
Eighty-five is first reading of ordinance number fifty-six ninety-three, an ordinance amending section seventeen point oh six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city of Rapid City for rezoning from a no-use district to a medium-density residential district located northeast corner of southeast, South Valley Drive in Orchard Lane, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, dealing with first reading of ordinance number fifty-six ninety-three, item number eighty-five. Any discussion on that motion, let's go to Marcia Elkins, growth management director.
Thank you, I just need to draw your attention that there is one letter of objection in the packet, this is first reading, it will go on to the planning commission at their next meeting. The concerns expressed in that letter addressed issues of the density. I wanted to make you aware of the fact that the reason it's being identified as medium-density residential is that there are several mobile home parks in this area and mobile home parks are conditional use in the medium-density residential, so we don't anticipate there to be large increases in density, but again, we wanted to make you aware of the letter that was in the packet.
Okay, very good, let's go to Alderman, Bonnie Peterson.
Yes, thank you, I was going to ask about what is written on this letter and Ms. Elkins, did you say you're going to be looking at this with the planning commission, these complaints or, I'm just wondering what the status is on these complaints, it looks like there's a lot of safety issues with water and sewer and.
Marcia?
The issues that are addressed here are existing conditions that were inherited by the city when we annexed the area into the city. Again, we're in the process of going from no-use district to the medium-density residential, that was again recommended so that the mobile home parks could be an allowable use in that district and trying to recognize what's existing. We don't anticipate that there'll be large increases in density, but I would expect that the planning commission will also have some consideration of this when they meet and discuss this on Thursday morning when they have their public hearing. As you'll recall, the first reading comes forward to you prior to the planning commission's recommendation, but I didn't want you to be unaware of the letter in the packet.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Peterson, you still have the floor?
Yes, I'm, well, I have concerns about these issues that are addressed in this letter and so I was just wanting to make sure that these are looked at or who the proper people are to get involved with them. Whether we inherited them or not, now that we have them, we need to take care of them.
Okay, anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval of first reading of ordinance number fifty-six ninety-three, dealing with item number eighty-five, any further discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number eighty-six, please.
Eighty-six is requested by Fisk Land's Rain and Consulting Engineers in Jamesdale for a layout plat located along the south side of Sunridge Road, west of intersection of Sunridge Road and Aztec Drive, approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations, this is item number eighty-six, which is a layout plat. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes, item eighty-seven, please. Yep, eighty, eighty-seven, please.
Sorry. Eighty-seven is discussion on use of council email during council meetings, Al, you have the floor.
Okay, could we have a motion? If nothing else, move to acknowledge or something, get her on the floor.
Move to acknowledge.
Okay, we have a motion and second to acknowledge, with that? Let's go to Kevin Tome and Russ Tinsold.
Just briefly, Mayor, Russ has been working with a couple of council members, doing some follow-up on this issue and I guess I'll just synopsize where I think we're at on it and that is, I don't know if that there's a technology solution to the Microsoft outlook question that was raised about still being able to look at their outlook, but I guess I'd like to point out to the council that that's just one piece of the pie. Even if you were able to solve that problem, you still have instant messaging, you have texting, you have Gmail, Facebook, a number of other ways to communicate from the dais that we have no control over, so it seems to me that it's, get up to the council, but it's as much a policy question as it is a, you know, trying to find a technology solution because again, if we can fix that one sliver, it's just one sliver in that whole pie in terms of communication that occurs.
Okay. Discussion. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'd like to thank Mr. Tinsold for taking the time to discuss some of these issues and in light of what Mr. Tome said, I, I guess I, I've also come to the conclusion that this really is about, you know, whether or not we are conducting conversations on the dais that we shouldn't. And I guess I've, I've thought about this for the past couple of days and I, I've come to the conclusion, there's two different ways that you can approach regulating different subject matters and one of them is to institute something and expect people to follow it and try and actively enforce that, the other way is that a compliance type of regulation where we expect you to comply and if not, there's a heavy penalty for not complying. And I guess I would, at this point, like to offer out for discussion the idea of having penalties associated with non-compliance by the rest of us council members to, if we want to go this route, to ensure the accountability of ourselves if that's what we need to do. Because it really seems like the underlying issue of this is accountability and trust and I guess I would like to just get down to the bottom of it and see which route we would like to take. And I would yield the floor for further discussion, thank you.
Very good. Say, Jason, is that something that could be written into the code of conduct?
Well, I, I don't know that it's really a code of conduct issue, it's an issue of state law and there are sanctions currently in place, one would be the open meeting commission, the potential for them to issue a reprimand if they find that the conduct violates the open meeting statute and the other is that there's a potential criminal penalty that could apply if the prosecutor decides that the, the acts violate the open meeting statute and so there, there are penalties in place already. If the council wanted to add something, you certainly could, but you couldn't supplant the ones that are provided by state law already.
Sure. Let's see, let's go to Alderman, Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just to reiterate some of the discussion that came up from legal and finance. The reason that this is, is on the agenda tonight truly isn't a, a technological one and I appreciate both Kevin and Russ bringing the fact that you looked into that, but it's more along the lines, I agree with, with other members of the council, this is a matter of trust. It, it's really a policy issue rather than a technological issue. The reason that it's of concern is that today, so much of the communication that we have is via email and many of us, I, I, I know I'm not alone in this, but I have multitude of folders within my outlook. We all do. And when a discussion takes place, many times I want to access that outlook to be able to access the information that has been sent to me in recent weeks or possibly even months or years earlier. If I don't have access to those folders, I may not be able to do my job that my constituents have elected me to do, I may not have all the information that I really need. It truly is my electronic file cabinet. I understand that there is a question mark of a couple of different state laws that we might be crossing the line, but ultimately, we don't cross that line until we communicate. We don't cross that line when we look at a file folder, we cross that line when we talk to each other. Hence the matter of trust. And this is where Alderman Mason and I may differ a little bit on this, I think up to that point, we were on the same page. I don't know that we need to go looking for a way to catch somebody doing something wrong. I think this is a, a perfect opportunity for the ten members of this council and the mayor to take a very, very major step forward trusting each other and coming forward with a policy that we all agree upon that we will not communicate while we're in session. Period. Without the need of a heavy hand or any worry about any repercussions. We've got state laws to back it up if it becomes a problem, but in the meantime, we trust. And if I could offer that as a motion, I would, but since I've already discussed it, I can't, so I'll leave it as such.
Very good, let's go to Alderman, Bonnie Peterson.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, I wanted to ask the Attorney Green a question.
Hey, go ahead, please.
Okay. Attorney Green is, like Alderman Davis said, is that where the line is crossed as far as the state law? as the state law? Because you understand what we're looking for is to access the file cabinet, and is that a violation of state law, or is the actual communication?
Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mayor. It's when you communicate, but it's a little more than that, and I need to expand on that. I agree that simply looking at a file that you've received previously is not a violation, but once your Outlook is open, you can also receive messages. You can receive messages from people at home, in the audience, or anywhere. And that becomes particularly problematic when we talk about public hearing items, where the people that come to the public hearing, that watch the public hearing on television, that the other council members don't have access to that information. There's very good case law that says that that's a violation of due process. So, it's more than just when you communicate with each other. It's also, in many instances, when you receive communication about matters that are occurring in the public meeting. I can't point to a state law directly on point. I can tell you that many, many other states have found that these things are clear violations of their open meeting statutes. And I need to point out one other thing that I missed when I was pointing out the sanctions that already exist. This council's adopted an ordinance that imposes a sanction as well, so if you wanted to change something, you would have to change that ordinance.
Okay, very good.
Can I continue?
You still have the floor, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, in clarification, if, say, an email, so you're just saying just having your email account open then is a violation? Just say, you know, my husband sends me an email, but I don't open it. I mean, are we still, is that a violation still? I'm just trying to understand where the actual violation occurs, once there is the communication or just the potential for communication?
Jason, if her husband says bring home milk during the meeting...
That's probably okay. If he says something about the matter that's under consideration, I think you've got a very good case for a due process violation.
But so, but if the email's not even opened, I mean, you can be searching stuff and not open your email, so that's where, that's where I'm just...
That makes it look less like a violation, but I can't tell you what a court's going to say about that one. That's really in the gray area at this point.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to find, get at. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Jason, do you have the ordinance that the council had brought forward?
Yes, it's section 2.40, I'm sorry, 2.04.120.
Could you read that for us?
Sure. It says, the first part of it says, defines electronic communication medium. It says, "For purposes of this section, electronic communication medium shall mean any technology that allows text, audio, static images, or video to be exchanged between two or more people in real time or near real time, creating or inviting an interactive exchange of information. Examples of electronic communication mediums include, but are not limited to, electronic mail, also known as email, instant messaging, chat rooms, cellphone text messaging, and web blogs, also known as blogs." The next section says, "The use of any electronic communication medium by members of any city, board, commission, or the common council during any meeting that is required to be open to the public by South Dakota law is prohibited."
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate you reading that. I guess, at this point, I would like to believe in trust, but sometimes trust and accountability, as you see, I like team, but sometimes that's not happening and hadn't happened in the past. You can put that forward, and all it takes is once, then what do you do? I mean, as I keep seeing, we're policymakers, we're politicians, we're different. Whether it be drug testing or anything else, it seems when it comes to violation, it's hard to police your own, and then if you do, look what happens. You get blasted for trying to do the right thing. So, the bottom line is, this came about with instant messaging. You couldn't track instant messaging, in a sense, when you went back into someone's computer, you couldn't track it. That's why I had a problem. You couldn't track what they were doing. I only sat next to people that were doing it, and they were exchanging emails, and they were exchanging more than emails. And that's what that came about. And people were trying to figure out in the audience how the other one knew what the other one was doing and what they were saying, and pretty soon, we just decided that it was done. Again, if it was a trust and accountability, these were adults up here at the time, and there was four of them that I know for sure that were doing it. It wasn't just one. And if we can change that by letting people do, and I understand Mr. Davis's issue, I think if we can change that so you are just getting your email, and it can be different and not violate open meeting laws, but I can tell you, I went through a lot of open meeting laws with the legislators and Mr. Green at that time, and Mr. Hanks can verify with that for that, or with that, because I was just kind of beating people up a little bit in a positive way to try to get to the bottom line on it. If it's just about trust and accountability, that would be a lot easier to work with, but we're talking politicians. And unfortunately, if we could be trusted with that, we should have just let it go and not brought a policy forward. If we could just say, stop doing this, you guys, this is in violation of open meetings. If it was that easy, it would have been different. Again, if we can bring this forward in emails, so it's something that is going to be workable without opening that can of worms, where you can't be tracking it, or someone can play a game with it, I'm not in favor of this anymore. I don't want these games. I want the public to be open to what we are talking about and what we're doing up on this dais, and they have full disclosure on what is happening. And if that happens, I'll be in favor of this as well, but I didn't enjoy the game then, and if we can find out that that game wouldn't be played again, I'd be in favor of this. But trust and accountability are big words, and there were four adults that couldn't abide by that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, and thank you, Alderwoman Hadcock. I couldn't agree more that trust and accountability in a day and age when we have figures from places like our Security Exchange Commission that are writing rules and regulations that are now before federal grand juries and being indicted and convicted, I couldn't agree more that the level of trust in our public figures has unfortunately suffered over the past couple of years. And I, more than anything, I couldn't agree more with you that the trust of the public that has been bestowed on us is very important, which is why I really am pretty passionate about this, that I think it's important to relay to the public that we are doing everything possible to ensure that that trust is appropriately bestowed with us. And I guess that's the reason why I wanted to have this conversation, is that I find that trust in our system is nothing short of the very foundation at which our government is established, and I think it's absolutely imperative that we do everything in our power to preserve that trust with the people and the government. And again, I do appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to, does anyone wish to speak before Alderman Davis speaks for a second time? So, please turn your light. Now, let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, if I may, direct to the city attorney.
Please, go ahead.
Jason, given the ordinance that you just read to us begs a question with, in recent weeks, we've been doing a certain amount of investigation into holding electronic meetings so that if a council member was not present, they could be here electronically. As I listen to that ordinance, I realize if it's open to the world, we're certainly not in violation of open meeting laws, but as I listen to that ordinance, I'm hearing everything that we've talked about, having that electronic presence at a meeting in violation of that ordinance. It appears that we're going to have to change that ordinance anyway. Is that correct?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
I don't think you would need to change this ordinance. I think that what you would do, if the council wishes to change the policy, I'll recommend that you adopt an ordinance specifically on teleconference or video conference meetings as an exception to this provision, and we can be specific about which portions are accepted and which portions are not.
So, to re-clarify my question, currently today, without an exception to this ordinance, an electronic presence at one of our meetings would be in violation of this ordinance also?
Let's go to Jason Green.
A video conference would be, a teleconference would not be, because the ordinance does not speak to telephone.
Right.
Thank you.
But it would be, it would be in violation of a resolution that is currently in effect. Okay, very good. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to acknowledge further discussion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we need to do more than acknowledge this. I think we need to discuss ways that we can amend this or change this process to allow access to our emails during meetings. None of us have instant message clients installed in our computers that I'm aware of. Not, you know, theoretically, in order to not be in violation of the ordinance, you could technically open up your Outlook email and then turn off your wireless switch and read them that way, but I think we need to clear this up, because what this ordinance forces us to do is to memorize the information that our constituents send us, and we're at a significant disadvantage, but not to pick on the department heads that are here, but I can walk by any one of their machines during the meeting, and they all have Outlook up, and they're all emailing, because they should be able to do that, not necessarily email, but to be able to pull up information to answer questions from an alderman during a meeting. So, why on earth can't we pull up the emails during the, during the, during the meetings, not necessarily, not to send, but so that we can see what our constituents have said? And, you know, Marcia Elkins can attest to this, that over the last eight years, when I've gotten emails from constituents relating to planning items and public hearing items, I forwarded them on to her so that she can link them to the public hearing agenda. And so, I think we need to find a way to address this issue. And we also have, you know, the discussion of the code of conduct has been alluded to, you know, that is written in such a vague manner that just about anything can be constituted as a violation, and that probably needs to be looked at as related to this too, but if we got rid of this, you'd still have that, and that also needs to be looked into. That's an issue for another day. But I, I think that it is, this is a little bit about controlling, controlling information, that we should be able to have access to the information that our constituents send us, and we should be able to access that information so that we can, you know, that we can share that information during the meetings. But there's been many times where I have, I have an email and, you know, that I wanted to share, but I can't remember what it says. And then after the meeting, it's like, wow, if I wish I would have been able to share that during the discussion, because it would have, it would have been pertinent to the, to the discussion. So, I think we need to recognize that, you know, three or four years ago was three or four years ago, and, you know, you know, memories may be fuzzy in what happened, and I don't really know what Alderwoman Hadcock's referring to, but I think we need to move forward and repeal or amend this ordinance to allow us to serve our, to serve our constituents. And I, is a motion in order at this point, or now that I've discussed it, I probably can't? But I guess I would ask someone to, to offer a motion to put the ordinance on a legal and finance agenda and have, and have a full, have a full discussion of the ordinance itself and look at amendments.
Okay. You're right. You can't make the motion now, but Alderman Quaker, as always, you have the ability to actually place it on the agenda if you suggest it.
I'm not on that committee.
You can still place it on the agenda, though. You can ask, any, any Alderman can ask for any item he placed on any agenda, either legal and finance and public works. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 88, please.
Is that me, here?
Yes, that would be you.
All right, sir. 88 is acknowledged as a report and recommendations from Taxi and Limousine Task Force and requests City Attorney Office to draft an ordinance amendment implementing the recommendations, and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for acknowledgement and to also give direction to the city council to start a draft on an ordinance. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an issue that I guess I, I would actually look to, there's some concerns that I have about this, and I guess I'm looking forward to seeing a little more clarification on what caused and what is the purpose of this. I heard some of the concerns raised during our legal and finance, and frankly, some of those concerns, I guess I can't understand that as being a reason for licensing, and one of the main concerns was safety. I guess I can't help but think that we already have laws and regulations already in place that apply equally to the taxi cab driver as well as to every person that operates a motor vehicle. And if, if a safety is the factor in that context, then I can't help but think that really then we may have an issue of more about enforcement of the current laws and regulations. And I guess I'm really looking for clarification on what brought this about. I mean, are we looking to dictate standards for an industry, or are we really looking for safety? And what is the true intent of this? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bilwa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one question. Was there any discussion on RTS drivers?
Let's go to Jason Green. I think that's actually covered, that would not, they're not considered basically for hire because they're fixed route, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I don't know if there was discussion or not, because that wasn't the liaison to the committees. We could certainly find that answer. I think the mayor's right, though. I think the RTS is going to be exempt from this.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Can I ask Chief Valander a question?
Sure, go ahead, please.
Chief Valander, do you have any information on this? I know J.J. had came forward on this, Officer Johns, and he had talked about some of the issues, and he was there. I don't know if he gave you that information, but, and also, just information that you would know on this, and number two, is there a safety factor? Is taxi cabs different than every other person? Meaning, are we having a lot of complaints about some of the scooters and some of the things that we want to start regulating, that maybe you have concerns at this point, or maybe your officers have concerns on why this has come about, or maybe even, I'll just, I'll just let you answer that.
Let's go to Chief Valander.
Sorry, Chief. We got all that, sorry.
Thank you. I am up to date generally on the, on the issue. I've just been reading through it, but I'll answer the last part first, and that's to the safety issue. When we, when we scrutinize taxi cab driver applications, we do so with criminal background check and also a driver's history check. And so, I think there's a very specific difference between a taxi cab driver and every other driver. The fact is, the system will allow someone to legally drive a car after they've had multiple DUI convictions. But when the licensing process comes through the city, and now we're in a position to determine whether it seems like a good idea to license someone for public transportation when they have multiple DUI convictions, and perhaps very recent DUI convictions, then that seems to, that seems to be a safety factor. Also, and keep in mind, we've denied very few of these applications, but they've always been for things like outstanding warrants and multiple convictions and revoke driver's license and so on.
Do you see this different, Chief, than hotels and motels that have driving limousine or whatever shuttle services and stuff? I mean, what was the difference on this group of people of doing limousines and the scooters and different, instead of those shuttles? Are they regulated in a different way?
I guess that's a good question. I, I'm perhaps behind on that part of it.
Let's go, Deb, if it's all right, let's go to Joel Lindy.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the city has always had an ordinance regulating taxi cabs. My understanding is one of the main reasons for looking at this is there were now several businesses that perform the function essentially of taxi cabs, but the way they operate their business, they weren't required to be licensed. So, you had people that were driving people home at night and, again, performing the services the same as a taxi, but they weren't required to be licensed, and it didn't seem fair that taxi businesses and the drivers of taxi cabs were required to be licensed, but because somebody was driving your actual car home... to be licensed, but because somebody was driving your actual car home and then dropping you off and then taking a scooter back downtown, that they not be licensed? And also using chase cars where they had somebody follow the other driver. I mean, they're performing the same service. The distinction is, didn't feel, when you're talking about, say, a courtesy van or shuttle, you know, that's not the main point of their business. They're providing a convenience for their customers who are bringing a car into the shop at a, let's say, a car dealership and getting their car fixed and then driving somebody back to work, and they're not doing it usually for a fee. It's usually, again, a convenience. So those generally are excluded, but mainly trying to pick up some of the businesses that are performing the services like a taxi but aren't currently licensed.
Thank you. Alderwoman Hadcock, you strove the floor.
So Joel, is the airport shuttle and those guys from the motels and stuff, are they licensed?
Joel?
I believe the airport shuttle is, and the airport shuttle would clearly be included under this, and I believe the gentleman that runs the airport shuttle was on the committee and came forward with these recommendations, and he feels that's appropriate. Again, the hotel shuttle would be more like the situation with the car dealership where it's a courtesy provided to customers of the hotel, and there isn't usually a separate fee charge for that.
So, just a question. People are worried sometimes about the competition, and maybe that's why the taxi cabs and people are bringing this forward, is they're just trying to shut down maybe their competition a little bit. How many different entities were in this meeting that will be affected by this new ordinance?
Joel?
You know, I can't answer for sure. I believe, again, the owner of the airport limousine was one of the members, and then I'm thinking there were two drivers from other businesses, but I don't know how much they spoke for the organizations they worked for.
Okay. And it sounds like there wasn't opposition on doing this from the committee or the people that were talking about this at the committee. I would say to let this move forward and see what they come up with, because I too, like Chief, think there's a safety factor. When you hear a lot of times that people are not getting backgrounds checks on some of this, and I'd have to hear and see the ordinance to agree with it, but it seems like I would like to see what they could come forward with, if there is many issues, or maybe Chief could come back when they come back with that ordinance and see how many violations of these different companies that have been kind of freeballing it out there and giving people rides home and stuff with many violations that shouldn't be driving people home. So I can tell you, from a beauty shop perspective, I hear the stories all the time about some of the drivers that have gave people rides home, have been in more violation than people driving sometimes, and those haven't been taxi drivers. So I would be in favor if it was a positive to make that difference. So, thank you.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the report and request City Attorney's Office to start a draft of an ordinance. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Alderwoman Hadcock. I appreciate some of the questions, and with that, I actually have two additional questions, if I may, to direct to Chief Police, Mr. Allender.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Allender, do you know if scooters and Jonesy, and maybe this question may be better directed to Mr. Lindin, if they were represented at all in this group?
I think, let's go to Joel. Joel Lindin?
I'm not aware that they were represented.
The reason I ask is because they are specifically mentioned as two companies that seem to be examples of what this is trying to include, to make sure, and I guess I've heard them mentioned numerous times in this discussion, and I just want to find out if there's any sort of representation or comments from them. The other thing I guess I would direct specifically to Chief Allender is the enforcement. And I guess I want to know if currently, if we do check cab drivers during DUI checkpoints or any of the like for enforcing to make sure that they aren't driving under the influence or currently conducting criminal activity while driving a cab.
Thank you, Mayor. Taxi cab drivers are subject to traffic enforcement like anyone else, so if they were to come through DUI checkpoints, they would be stopped and checked at that time. If they commit traffic violations, they'd be stopped and checked, but we don't randomly stop them to do a quality check or whatever.
Okay.
Thank you. In all yield.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for Joel. Joel, some daycare providers, as part of the care that they provide, will pick up children at school and then bring them to their place afterwards, but the charge will start at the time that they're picked up at school, and there might be transportation costs as well. Is that going to come under this ordinance?
That certainly isn't the intent. We're trying to pick up as vehicles for hire, where you're actually hiring out the vehicle or the transportation, and that is what the fee you're paying for, not situations where the transportation is provided as a courtesy as part of another service, or, again, the bus is fixed route. The reality is, nobody is going to probably know if a daycare provider is doing that. We would know as if somebody was providing and advertising and holding themselves out as a vehicle for hire, you know, call my number and we will pick you up and drive you. That we would know, and then those people would expect it to be licensed.
Alderman Quaker, you're off the floor.
And thank you for making that point, because that's precisely the issue that we ended up with, the coin gem and mineral dealers, because some of them were licensed and some of them weren't, and there really wasn't any way to enforce it. It really simply became a revenue stream for the city, the licensing, and it was also very hard on the business, because somebody could come in from Minneapolis and not comply. And we ultimately, after a lot of discussion, ended up repealing the licensing altogether for gem and mineral and coin dealers. So, you know, we have some et ceteras listed in this memo that really could end up becoming issues, because if we're going to start regulating vehicles for hire and a daycare provider charges somebody 10 bucks to pick up their kids at Wilson Elementary School, then that is a vehicle for hire, and then you're running into issues of relicensing daycares that already have to go through licensing procedures. So the intention here, I think, is very, very good, but we really need to consider the unintended consequences before we proceed with implementing an ordinance. And I think Alderman Mason makes a very good point. If we're going to name the licensing of such operations as Jonesys and scooters, you know what? They ought to have a seat at the table when this is discussed. They should be part of a committee. We put together a new committee, but we should not make the mistake of repeating what happened with the gem and mineral licensing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Just for a point of clarification, when we did put the committee together, we did actually publicize it, asked for people to actually submit their names, and we did not get any names from either the Jonesy bus or the scooters. They absolutely had the opportunity to serve on the committee. Matter of fact, I believe I appointed, just about, matter of fact, I think I pointed everyone who actually submitted an interest form. So if they were interested, they absolutely had the opportunity to serve on the committee. With that, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you saying that, because I had seen that, and also, on this, they still have public input that's coming up, so their voice will be heard. And for the bottom line, I would like to look at the gem and mineral law again, because I'm looking at different states and what they do, and I think we could do it differently.
Point of order, please. Let's not get into this discussion.
This is not a fight. This is something that he had talked about that put this in the same category.
Okay. Real quick, I'm going to address a point of order. Alderman Quaker, your point of order is just on topic. Deb, if you can try and...
Well, my point of order would be, don't bring something forward if you don't want to talk about it. You know what I'm saying, Mayor Hanks? If you want to relate it to something, then you come back and someone says, maybe we ought to look at that again, because it should be looked at just like this. I don't think that's a bad thing. So I will be looking into the gem and mineral, just because constituents have been bringing forward some of the issues on that. So I appreciate that, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the report and to request City Attorney's Office to start a draft on the ordinance. Signal for the lights. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Posed. Motion passes. Item number eighty-nine, if you would, please, Deb. Item number eighty-nine.
Thank you, sir. Eighty-nine is the authorized mayor and finance office to sign amendment to develop our agreement for TID number fifty to allow a partial payment of $24,999.99, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? This is item number eighty-nine. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Posed. Motion passes. Item ninety.
Item ninety is authorize mayor and finance office to sign covenant agreement between the City of Rapid City and SSST LLC requiring fire sprinkler protection. I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? We're dealing with item number ninety. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Posed. Motion passes. We're on to the Public Works Committee items. Alderman Quaker, could you please read it? Item number ninety-one, please.
Item ninety-one is to authorize staff to purchase a new current year model compact truck, four-by-four extended cab from state contract. Vendor is Wagner Auto and Pier. It's the purchase price of $20,000. Yield to the floor.
We have a motion, please.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. I think there was a request at committee, let's see, Public Works, Robert Ellis, go. Okay. I think the request was, had this been offered to the local car dealerships, and the answer was yes, it had been. Correct? Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Posed. Motion passes. Item number ninety-two, please.
Item ninety-two is a Public Works Committee item Providence addition. This is a request by Charles Gruba for a fence height exception to allow a six-foot fence in lieu of a four-foot fence in a front yard setback located at 2715 and 2725 West Rapid Street. Recommendation is for approval, and that is my motion.
Who's that? With approval with stipulations? Alderman Quaker? Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Item number ninety-two. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Posed. Motion passes. Bids. Item number ninety-three.
Item number ninety-three is the Sixth Street pedestrian crossing. We received six bids. The engineer's estimate was $206,000. The recommendation is to award the bid to KRM Concrete LLC in the amount of $192,292.10.
Okay, could we have a motion, please?
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't be in favor of this. I do think it's a good project in one sense, but I think when budgets are tight and funding sources, a lot of times this is $200,000. We do have a pedestrian crossing that is working fine. We're just going to line it up at the Civic Center and Sixth Street. I do have a couple of concerns and wondered if we ever did a analysis, a traffic analysis there, putting an intersection or a pedestrian crossing that close to an intersection where you have a merge lane. You also have, a lot of times, those cars are backed way up in there. I know during hockey or any other times, it's already backed right through, almost past Sixth Street. So I think what you're doing is you're causing more safety factors there, putting that lane that close. But just, Pauline, do you know, or Mayor, do you know, did they ever do a traffic analysis of this Sixth Street?
I'm going to go to Robert Ellis. The answer is yes. The state DOT prior to, it took almost two years, the state DOT did go through, did a study, and they believe that there is the stacking ability within that intersection and not interfere with pedestrian crossing. Robert, did I get that right?
Why'd they change their mind?
Let's go to Robert Ellis.
You know, I don't know the history on it. My understanding is the signal used to be at Sixth Street. The DOT, when they did Omaha, moved it to a mid-block. They thought that'd be a better location for it. It gets marginal usage or compliance as it is right now. Generally, you see people crossing at Sixth Street, at Seventh Street, because they're, you know, a lot of them are during the day, the children going to school, crossing to get to the downtown. They're not using the mid-block. They're just going to the intersection, looking for a gap and darting across the road. We did work with the DOT and their traffic engineers to take a look at if the signal was moved to Sixth Street, what would be the impacts on the vehicular traffic? And they found that the queuing, the number of vehicles that stack up in the left turn lane to go north at Fifth Street would not be impacted in the immediate future. Long term, it may display some of that queuing ability for that intersection. But as far as compliance goes, it was our thought that you're going to get better compliance, enhanced safety by putting the crosswalk where people are going to use it, rather than making them go out of their way in the mid-block location. It wouldn't get as good of usage if it was there. So, you know, that's really why this is coming forward, that in conjunction with the Roger Brooks, the downtown master plan of connecting the Civic Center with the downtown and trying to get rid of that great wall effect that Omaha Street does create, and trying to fold that into the downtown. So for those various reasons, that's why this was coming forward.
Okay. Alderwoman Hadcock, you strove the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Robert, for that explanation. I understood why we were doing it, and in one sense, I didn't think it was a bad idea, because it looked nice, and aesthetically, it would be a great thing for Sixth Street. That's not, that wasn't my main concern. Number one, is it a have-to or a want? Did it have to be done, or it's something we wanted to connect Sixth Street? For me, it could stay there, and it wouldn't affect anybody, and it would still do its job. To me, then, it looks like a want. We want to make it so aesthetically on Sixth Street to the Civic Center, it looks better. It'll still do its job, and you have a funding source of $200,000 that you're going to use for something maybe you want to make it prettier. If it really helped on the pedestrian crossing, I think Omaha Street, if I'm right, Chief said, most places for pedestrian crossings is where people get hit the most. For me, it just doesn't seem, and I'm not a traffic engineer either, but when you merge that lane and people are going fast enough on that merge lane, I don't see how they're going to see them in time if they're going 20 to 30 miles an hour. And sometimes you see people coming off that thing 30 to 50 miles an hour. That's like a quarter of a block. You have to believe the traffic engineer and understand that. But I've seen people come off that thing, and they're barely able to stop by the time they hit that light right there. So not in favor of putting it there? I don't think it's a have-to. I think it's a want. Have you put a lot of time in there, Robert Ellis? I appreciate that. You've done a lot of work, because the council and the mayor and people, they want this. But again, it's a want. I don't believe it's a have-to. We can save the $200,000 for something in Rapid City that if we need to change something that really is a tight safety factor or a big want, we could be using it for that. So I won't be in favor of it.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I also would like to concur Alderwoman Hadcock's thoughts on this, that I also have some reservations about this, and I appreciate her originally, during the first discussion, bringing a lot of the concerns up, not only with the bid that was put out and how we do that, but also some of her other concerns. And I guess, you know, I guess I would like to reiterate some of those concerns that, as our Director of Public Works, Mr. Ellis, stated, that, you know, we did move this, and the South Dakota Department of Transportation did move this to the mid-block area. And I guess that's part of where I'm at, too, is that if this were a necessity, you know, I guess I would look back at when we moved this originally and ask, why didn't we do this the first go around? Also, with the fact that we're roughly 200 feet away from not only an intersection but a merge lane coming off of Haynes Way, I guess I also, you know, I'm no expert either, but it just seems that, I've seen people buzzing down Fifth Street and going on and churning onto Omaha, and that doesn't seem like a heck of a lot of time, especially during some of our slippery winters, for a good time to slow down for a stop sign, and I guess I do have some concerns about that. So I guess I would raise some safety concerns about the location of this crosswalk. And then lastly, again, it's 200 feet the other direction. We do currently have a crosswalk that can be used, and I guess that's really where I'm at, is we already do have the availability of something like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of points of clarification. The reason it got moved was the state... The reason it got moved was the state DOT, when they reconstructed Omaha Street, they did it over the very strong objections of the city to actually move that to a mid-block crossing. Marsha, is that a fair statement? The city was adamant that they not move it. The state DOT, since that's a state route, they made that determination, they moved it. The other question that was brought up, is this really a safety issue? Let me just remind you of an accident that occurred, what, about, Chief, when, was that two months ago? We had a, three months ago, we had a gentleman got knocked, what, about half a block down Omaha Street when he was trying to cross at the corner of Sixth. I will tell you, and be honest with you, I would ask you to continue this for two weeks, and you go stand out at the corner of Sixth Street on a afternoon when school lets out. I will tell you, I can see it from my office. It is a safety issue. We're gonna have someone get hit there because of the fact that those young folks are going to find the shortest distance to cross that street. And when they're coming up Sixth Street, they don't bother with that pedestrian crossing, and I think what you'll find is, you'll see, and I've watched it, probably less, I'd say probably only about half the people that are crossing Omaha Street use that mid-block crossing. The other thing I will point out is the fact that, in my mind, this isn't any different than what the city's done in the past. We just installed a pedestrian crossing for about the same price at Rapid City Regional Hospital. There was a concern. We came up with, what was it, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to put that in, a number of years ago when I was in the council. There was concerns about the traffic at the high-rise on Cathedral. Traffic study did not recommend that we put it in that location, but it was a safety issue. We approved that. So just keep that in mind, is the fact that, you know, like I say, I would encourage you to go out and just take a look at it. That's the easiest thing to do, go out and take a look. With that, let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna make a subsequent motion and continue this for two weeks.
We have a motion and a second to continue this item for two weeks. Discussion on the continuation motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see any reason to continue this. We kinda had the same discussion back when we brought this forward. History looks like the city was overruled by the state about what, where it was safe for, you know, to put it when it was built. And it's very well-known that people will cross where they want to cross, and that's usually the shortest distance that we can go, or perceived distance. I see it also, I mean, I see it as a safety issue, and also when we're building, investing in the Sixth Street Main Square, where we're gonna be inviting more and more people to come over and cross in that area, and they too will cross. So I see it just as an extension of, of the Main Street Square and the safety for people, because we want people to come in from, you know, to cross over from the Civic Center area into the downtown, and plus for safety for, for the people that already cross now. And I understand that you have fast drivers coming, and that's also a concern that Mr. Mason and Hadcock brought up. But I think once people learn that that light will be there, hopefully it'll help them modify their behavior, because it sounds like they're being reckless regardless if there's a light there or not. And anyway, I would just prefer for us all to vote on this tonight, myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm concerned about the continuation motion as well, and it seems that new, new information is now being used in the, in the debate, and we don't have that information to really go on. I mean, we, we're now hearing that someone was knocked down and, and, you know, thrown because of where the intersection was located, but we don't have access to that police report. I mean, so if we're going to continue this, and if that card is going to be played, then that needs to be discussed in, in full context, so that we can all understand it. I would also point out that our rules of operation for council meetings are very clear. The mayor may not make motions, but may debate all motions if he or she relinquishes a chair. So, and then also, it's my recollection that the, it's my recollection that State Department of Transportation moved this intersection against our will, and one of the reasons that they cited in moving it, my recollection, was safety reasons. So we got two agencies that are bringing up the, bringing up the, the issue of safety. Is it the one that says safety the loudest that wins? I don't, I just don't understand this. And so if we're going to continue this, then let's bring all the information in, but let's not throw out something at the last minute and state that we're going to get people run over if we don't move this intersection. Department of Transportation, my understanding, moved this intersection in part because of, of traffic flow and, and safety. And so with that being said, if this motion to continue passes, I hope all the information is, is brought forward if new items are going to be introduced into the debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is a continuation motion. Chief, didn't we have this discussion as far as the injury at Legal and Finance for Public Works?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we did.
And last meeting also?
Question was raised, and if there were, recently to that discussion, there had been a motor vehicle accident involving a pedestrian and a car. I will just weigh in a little bit here. There, we could come forth with a couple of other recommendations of Omaha Street between West Boulevard going all the way out to nearly Campbell Street, that this is a high, high-traffic area for pedestrians, and I can tell you from a standpoint of running ambulance calls in Rapid City, it's a very, very dangerous section of road for us, and we do see a number of car pedestrian accidents along that corridor, so makes sense.
Very good. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Can I ask how much money it would take to take out that intersection? The one that's already there? The crossing, pedestrian crossing? To demo it?
Robert?
Without going through the actual bid items line by line, I really couldn't tell you that. I will say that they are gonna remove and salvage the traffic signal materials that they can, so they'll be reusing those for the new signal.
Okay. I guess it would make sense if you could just leave the stuff like it is, but in one sense, then we'll have people crossing there without a light. But it seems for cost-effective, if you wanted to do something that actually made sense, it would be to leave the stuff there except for the light. So it'd be another place for someone to cross, because either way, that's a big spread from Sixth Street also to Eighth Street. So if we can do something where maybe, I, I have no idea, Robert, but if you're gonna spend the money, it seems like I wouldn't demo that. Number one, it looks nice, and number two, it's just another place, as Mr. Maltevern says, for crossing. He didn't say that specific thing, but just for a safety factor, because that's a pretty good spread. Moving it this way puts us a half-block off. Moving that way is about three, four blocks that people, and I truly believe, and I have a business on Fifth Street, guys, that people cross wherever they want. You can put three or four crossings, and they'll still, even, I have a light on Columbus Street and then a light on Kansas City. People cross at Quincy all the time. So it's crazy. You should see how many people, we watch, I mean, it's not funny, but you watch how many people actually run across that street and how many, you know, have to stop, or it's the craziest thing you've ever seen. You only have to go a quarter of a block. So we might wanna take those things in consideration, thinking safety factors, because again, that's a lot longer ways for people to run across on that three or four-block period than it is a quarter-block. So I'm trying to figure out, except for the Sixth Street, it'll look nice, what is the, why would you move it? So you're actually, to me, it looks like you're creating more of a mess, and you probably have to put one in again, or move a little bit, another one further down, because if Rapid City gets any bigger, it's a huge street. People are gonna run across that no matter what. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just, I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, I, I concur with Alderwoman Peterson's comment that people are going to cut across wherever they want, and as well as Alderwoman Hadcock stating that as well. I guess what befuddles me here is we have a pedestrian crossing at Fifth Street right on this corner. We have one right in between Sixth and Seventh thus far, so mid-block crossing. So we're gonna have three pedestrian crossings within about five-hundred feet of each other. I guess I'm just trying to understand the necessity of this, and, and going back and just touching on, I, my big concern here is that we are going to create a situation that we are encouraging people to cross in an area where we have a high-traffic flow of cars already, and it could encourage and create a safety situation by designing it that way. And I guess, again, I refer to some of the comments already made, that South Dakota Department of Transportation overruled us, and I guess I would just like to reiterate some of those points. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, I'm gonna go to Robert Ellis, but just for a point of clarification, if indeed this, this is awarded, this would be removing the current mid-cross blocking, there would only be two pedestrian crossings. That one would come out. So with that, let's go to Robert Ellis.
Yeah, and I was just gonna add, you know, this is a very simple concept. It doesn't take an engineer from the city or from the state to understand that people are gonna take the shortest distance possible from where they start to where they wanna go. And that's what happens out there. I think the DOT thought that they could engineer people's bad habits away by moving the block, mid-block, because that's the safe place, and people will just know that's where they need to go. But when you're walking, especially when the weather's bad, you're not gonna take more steps than you need to, you're gonna take as few as possible to get where you're going. And with everything that's going on with Sixth Street, with Main Street Square, with the Civic Center over here, you're gonna see more and more pedestrian traffic, and the route they're gonna take is gonna be Sixth Street. And I think that that's what we found, is that, you know, the DOT tried to put it at six and a half, thinking we'll engineer that out, that bad habit away, and it really hasn't worked, because if you sit out there during any typical day, you're gonna see the compliance of people using that mid-block crossing is very poor. People go to Sixth Street, they go to Seventh Street, because they wanna walk down Sixth Street or Seventh Street. They don't wanna walk the half-block up and the half-block back. And so if this isn't done tonight, it will be done at some point in time, because you're just gonna see that people are gonna cross the most convenient location, and if it's more dangerous, they're still gonna do it if they wanna take that risk. So, you know, I just wanna throw that in there. It, it, it's not an engineering issue. It's, it's common sense, really.
Motion on the floor is to continue. Side him for two weeks. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? No. Let's take a roll call, please.
Davis.
Aye.
Hadcock.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Ostello.
No.
Quaker.
No.
Wa.
Aye.
Mason.
Aye.
Peterson.
Okay. Motion passes on a six-to-two vote, correct?
Yes. Five, three. Six, seven, eight.
I hope we only have eight people here.
Yeah. Five, three. Five, three. Five, three passes.
Motion is continued. Pauline, item number ninety-four.
Item number ninety-four is the 2010 Annual Fire Hydrant Installation Project. We received four bids on this. We actually bid out a base bid and two alternates. The engineer's estimate was twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Recommendation is to award the base bid only to Mainline Contracting for the amount of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
We have a motion and a second to award to Mainline Contractors for the base bid of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number ninety-five, please.
Item ninety-five is the 2010 Manhole Adjustments Project. This is actually an informal quote. We received two quotes. The amount of the engineer's estimate is nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. The recommendation is to award the quote to Highmark Inc. in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award to Highmark Inc. for fourteen thousand dollars. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Item ninety-six is the Tomahawk Drive Sanitary Sewer Extension. Again, this is an informal quote. We received four quotes on this project. The engineer's estimate was thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Recommendation is to award the contract to Mainline Contracting in the amount of forty-eight thousand one hundred and seven dollars.
We have a motion and second for approval to award to Mainline Contracting for a total amount of forty-eight thousand one hundred and seven dollars. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Pauline. There's no items under the mayor's items. We go to the council items and liaison reports. We have a ninety-six A. Alderman, let's see, Kroger, and that was for the second-floor working group update. Alderman Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any specific. I just wanted the council to be aware that the second, second-floor review committee has been meeting on a weekly basis, and will be bringing something forward here in the very near future. So I just wanted to let everybody know that we are meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any discussion on that? How about a motion to acknowledge?
Slow move.
We have a motion and second to acknowledge. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Ninety-six B, please. That would be Christmas lights. Alderwoman Hadcock.
Kroger said move the table. It's not working. Yes, I'd just like to say this Friday, November fifth, at eight o'clock, we're decorating downtown Christmas trees at Sixth and St. Joe. That's what time we'll be meeting, but I also, and that's for anybody who'd want to volunteer helping wrap downtown trees. Last few years, I can honestly say that the firemen have done most of the work for wrapping the trees in the Parks Department, and we really appreciate the Fire Department. They also came out for Halle Park on Saturday. Chief Maltevern, we showed him how to wrap a Christmas tree without a ladder. He enjoyed that. I said, that's the first time we ever taught a fireman how to not use a ladder to get up in a tree. So I'd like to thank the Fire Department, Chief Maltevern, for helping us, the Parks Department, Doug, and Scott, and Gary, and Lon Van Duzen, good people, have always helped us with the Christmas lights. I also like to thank Jerry's Cakes and Bakes for the donuts, the Kesseloffs, Gene and Bill, the Work Release Unit Sergeant Severson, who always is very compliant and giving us some work release people to help us. I appreciate all the work release guys that helped us. Brenda Tangsru, who also helped us bringing water and different things, helping out. My sister-in-law, who's helped with the last couple of years. And let's see if I missed anybody. I think I got everybody, but it's always a fun time, and then we did go out, a couple of us, on Sunday and, and finished off the rest of it. So Halle Park should be bright this year due to many people who have made that difference. So we appreciate your help, and especially, like I said, the Parks Department also, they come out on Saturdays, so we thank them very much, and they're very helpful, and they're always a lot of fun. So thank you again, and we are having, again, a downtown tree wrapping at eight o'clock Friday, and we're meeting at Sixth and St. Joe. Thanks for all your help, for all the people that have made that difference on Christmas lights.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hadcock, for all of your work to beautify the city. And I know you just told us that again, when the next time to help with Christmas trees. Could you please repeat that?
Ma'am, that'd be this Friday, November fifth, at eight o'clock, and we're meeting at Sixth and St. Joe, and that'd be the parking lot there.
At eight AM?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Very good. We have a motion to acknowledge.
Slow move.
We have a motion and second to acknowledge. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Very good. We have a motion to acknowledge. We have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-six C, which is holiday cards, or holiday, Chris, holiday cards, from Alderman Mason Short. What am I saying? Jordan Mason. Boy, there's a name from the past. Mason Short, former airport director.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry for timing my break badly. I guess I want to bring up the issue that has been raised a, a few weeks prior by Alderman Quaker, dealing with the city's practice of sending out holiday cards. And I guess I just wanted to open up the discussion once and for all, and just talk about whether or not we wanna continue this practice, and maybe also allow the mayor to clarify on the history of this practice, just to see where we're at as a council, and see if we wanna continue this as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just give a little bit of a history. As far as we know, the city has been sending out Christmas cards on behalf of the mayor and the city council for at least forty-plus years. As far back as when K. Rip and Traffery started, back in the early seventies. The folks that we actually send to are not individuals. The list is actually businesses, and with a, with the exception of elected officials. And if they happen to be an individual member of the chamber or another organization, then they do get a Christmas card. But these are not sent out to individuals. It's actually sent out to businesses. And I think there is a list going up and down the dais of, of the folks that actually receive that. Typically, it's a CVB, the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development, the Hospitality Association, many of the nonprofit organizations, United Way, and so forth. So those are the ones that actually get the Christmas cards. And those are sent on behalf of the mayor and the city council. That's basically what it says. Happy holidays for Mayor Hanks and the Rapid City Council. So it costs us about eight, eight hundred dollars a year to send the postcards out. We send about a thousand out. We also do send, just also for another point of clarification, we also do send some to our other elected officials. State legislators get those. Other mayors from other municipalities will also get those. And I'm trying to think who else. County commissioners will get some also. But typically, if there's any concern that these are going out to the, the general public, the answer is no, they do not. You have to typically be an elected official or a member of an organization. With that, be happy to answer any questions. Alderman Mason, you still have the floor if you'd like it.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate that clarification and the history on this. I guess there's, over the past few weeks, I guess I've heard some concern raised about this. And I, I guess I would yield the floor to my colleagues to discuss this further, just to decide, frankly, once and for all, whether we wanna continue this practice or not. And if not, maybe discuss some of the reasons why we wouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
I would like to offer a motion that we go green, and even though it'll be a little time-consuming at first, to put in, gather up all the emails for these businesses. And so that we, one, are environmental, and also in our Christmas card, we can also say that, like those cute little reminders at the Civic Center and the airport about join us in going green. We all want to enjoy the Christmas spirit, but I think this is an easy way to save, even though it's only eight hundred dollars, it's still eight hundred here, eight hundred there. We end up saving some money for our constituents. And anyway, I would like to offer a motion that we go green and make our Christmas emails for the city, and it'd be fun, because we could always stick pictures or who knows what, and make them creative for the Christmas spirit for our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and that is a great idea. Very good idea. Wish I would've thought of it. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only addition I would make to that is I would hope that, a compliment, by the way, Bonnie, on, on the suggestion to, to go green and the opportunity that we have to expand upon not just the postcard, and that it may become
A newsletter or something.
A newsletter of sort, but also to expand the mailing list, if you would, that it isn't just local businesses and some of our legislators, but also some of the businesses that we may be trying to attract, that it, we look at it from an economic development standpoint, that those people that we're trying to encourage to look at Rapid City in a positive light, this may be an opportunity for us as well. So don't, don't limit yourself, I guess is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Emails are cheap. Very good. Additional discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I understand the motion, and I agree with the motion. And it's my understanding that this means that we will not be sending out the physical cards this year. Thank you.
Yep. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Let's go to item number ninety-seven. Mr. Ellis, do you have an update on 2012? No changes. Very good. Can we have a motion to acknowledge? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you. I just want some clarification. In this, dealing with the 2012 funding, and I, I do apologize, I seem to have lost my place here. But if I remember correctly, the current 2012, from reading it previously, I was a bit concerned by the, the total amount on the bottom there, and I just wanted to make sure that I had read that correct. Pulling it up now, that we had committed fifty million, and now we're at fifty-nine million for approved, just to clarify.
Pauline, do you see where he's talking about at the bottom of page eight? Let's go to Robert Ellis.
Yes. What that means is fifty-nine million nine hundred and forty-two, four hundred and seventy-one dollars was approved by the committee and the council. Under contract or committed is fifty million seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. So there's still money out there that has not been committed, not under contract.
So we did not, we did not overspend?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I was just trying to make sure that I was reading that correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good question. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're onto the public hearing items. These are items ninety-eight through one eighteen. And keep in mind, they also do include items sixty-seven, I'm sorry, yes, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, ninety-nine A, and one hundred A. So those are also within this time period. And the chair would look for motion to open the public comment period on items ninety-eight through one eighteen, inclusive with the addition of sixty-seven, sixty-eight, ninety-nine A, and one hundred A. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Spurlock, did you want to talk to any of these?
I'm probably just gonna slow down the process, but my name is Doug Spurlock, and I represent the petitioner. I would just like you to take item one hundred off of the continued consent calendar and put it on the consent calendar. We do have the waiver of right to protest on file now. It got there Friday.
Very good. I think we do have that to be polled. Thank you. And let's see. We also have a speak request form from Lauren Stanley. Items, let's see, one oh six through one oh nine. Is that correct? Mr. Stanley, if you would, please.
Hi, my name's Lauren Stanley, representing Walgreens. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today about the application to sell wine and beer at the two west, or the west side and the south side Walgreens. I'm here today to request approval of these licenses because this is something our customers are requesting. Being responsive to their needs is our top priority. They want the convenience of one-stop shopping. Increasingly, it also means the convenience of making the occasional purchase of beer and wine at the same place they pick up everyday items such as cosmetics, toothpaste, and shampoo. We pledge to meet these needs safely and responsibly, in compliance with local regulations, and in keeping with our overall mission as a retailer. Walgreens takes responsibility of selling alcoholic beverages very seriously. We manage beer and wine sales with the same concerns for safety as our exceptionally strong history of distributing highly regulated products like prescription medications. Just as our stores have changed over the years, so has our selection of alcoholic beverages. We are not opening a full liquor store within our stores we have in the past. Our selection of value to moderately priced beer and wine is tailored to our customers' tastes and lifestyles. We will only sell full-size containers, just like the selection in a grocery store. We will not sell single servings, miniatures, pints, or half pints. This new limited selection of alcoholic beverages has comprised less than two percent of the store's total self-service space. In conclusion, we believe adding beer and wine to our shelves serves customers with a new level of convenience, and serves the community with additional sales tax revenue for municipal budgets. We again offer a complete reassurance that these sales will be handled responsibly by a retailer you can trust that's been in business for, for more than a hundred and nine years. Thanks for your consideration for this application, and we're here to answer any of your questions.
Yep. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stanley. I do not have any additional speak request forms. Now, at this period, we do leave the open, or the public hearing open as we go through. Mr. Quaker, did you have something on a specific item, or? Okay, very good. Thank you. Chair would ask if any items on the continued public hearing consent items were dealing with ninety-eight through one oh three, ninety-eight through one oh three need to be polled. I'm gonna, where'd Marcia go? Marcia?
Ninety-nine A, one hundred, sixty-seven, one hundred A, one oh one, and sixty-eight.
Okay. Read those back to me. Can you do them in numeric order, so I'm not jumping?
Sixty-seven, sixty-eight, ninety-nine A, one hundred, one hundred A, one oh one.
Do we have anything left? I'm kidding. Okay. How about from the, Sam, did you have anything to poll, or? Okay, very good. Okay, the chair would look for motion to approve the continued public hearing consent items, items ninety-eight through one oh three, with the exception of sixty-seven, sixty-eight, ninety-nine A, one hundred, one hundred A, and one oh one. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Marcia, help me along here. We do need to take up item number ninety-nine A prior to one hundred. Is that correct?
That's correct. That is a waiver of right to protest for item number one hundred. It was received after your four PM deadline. However, it is ready to proceed, and the applicant has requested that you act on it tonight.
Okay. Could we have a motion, please? Okay. We don't have any steps on a warp, do we?
Correct. No steps.
So motion on the floor is for approval of the warp. Any discussion? We have a motion and a second, correct? Charlene, did you get that? Ron Kroger made the motion. Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay. Mr. Costello. Okay. Discussion on that motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. See, Deb, could you read in item one hundred, please?
One hundred is a request by Spurlock Consulting Incorporated for Century Development Corporation Incorporated for a variance to the subdivision regulation to waive the requirement to install sewer and sidewalk along East North Street to provide twenty additional feet of right-of-way, and install a sewer along North Creek Drive to provide a sidewalk along the west side of North Creek Drive and provide sewer along Century Road as per chapter sixteen point sixteen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and then be located southwest of the intersection of East Anamosa Street and East North Street. Approved with stipulation, if we wish. Just kidding.
That's what it does say. Okay, the motion on the floor, do we have a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations, dealing with item number one hundred. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Item sixty-seven. And let's see, where we go. Let's go back to item number sixty-seven, and I'll ask, let's see, what is that? Deb, you wanna go ahead and read in item number sixty-seven, please, which is a preliminary plat?
Sixty-seven is a request by Spurlock Incorporated for Century Resources for a preliminary plat located southwest of the intersection of East Anamosa Street and East North Street. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion?
With stipulation.
Okay. Yes, that is correct. Any discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations, dealing with item number sixty-seven. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Marcia, we need to take up item one hundred A. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that is a warp?
It is a warp that is related to one hundred and one. Again, the applicant has asked that this be approved. It was received after the deadline, but we'd like to proceed.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Charlene, did you get that? Alderman Davis was motion maker. Alderman Kroger was the seconder. And that is for approval of item one hundred A, which is a warp. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Let's see. Alderwoman Haddock, could you read in item one oh one, please?
One oh one is a request by WIS Associates Incorporated for Rapid City Defense Housing Corporation for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install a sidewalk along the east side of Wildflower Drive and south side of Clover Ridge Drive, on the west side of Prairie View Drive, on both sides of the street, on Range View Circle, Range View Court, and Harvest Lane on the north side of Field View Drive and Minnesota Street. Well, to reduce the right-of-way width from fifty-two feet to fifty feet on Wildflower Drive, Clover Ridge Drive, Prairie View Drive, and on a portion of Range View Circle, to reduce the cul-de-sac right-of-way width from one hundred and ten feet to a hundred feet on the Prairie View Court and Range View Court, to reduce the right-of-way width from a hundred feet to ninety feet and eighty feet on the Minnesota Street, to reduce the pavement width from twenty-seven feet to twenty-point five feet on Wildflower Drive, Clover Ridge Drive, Range View Circle, to reduce the pavement width from twenty-four feet to twenty-point five feet on the Prairie View Court, Range View Court, and Harvest Lane, to reduce the cul-de-sac pavement width from ninety-six feet to sixty-nine feet on the Prairie View Court and Range View Court. Well, and to waive the requirement to install a sewer main on the Wildflower Drive from Minnesota Street to Clover Ridge Drive and Range View Circle, from Wildflower Drive to Range View Court, as per chapter sixteen point sixteen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, located on the west of Campbell Street, south of East Minnesota Street, and east of Elm Avenue. Is there anything we didn't cover, sir, on that one?
I think you're getting on. Actually, there'll be a quiz.
Move approval with stipulation, if we wish.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of stipulation.
I wish we had less on there. Just kidding.
Any discussion on that motion? Holy cow. Yeah. Deb, could you please repeat? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
On page, page seven of the attach, attachment, the staff report, at the bottom, it says, "To date, a sidewalk has not been constructed along the north side of East Minnesota, a distance of approximately three hundred and seventy-five feet. Extending the sidewalk along the balance of the street as it abuts the property will provide a pedestrian connection to Campbell Street." So I understand financially the reasons for not doing this now. But Marcia, at what point will this, will this be done?
Marcia?
I believe the reference to sidewalk on the north side of Minnesota Street, that will be done when building permits are being pulled for the lots on the north side. Recently, we had a building permit issued for the Knights of Columbus on one of those lots. But there'll be additional development in that area, on these lots, again. Let's see if I can draw it in. On these lots in this area. We did recently issue a building permit, that lot.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So Marcia, the, the lots that were seeking, they're, were seeking the requirement to, to waive the sidewalk requirement, are those are all developed, or undeveloped lots, or a mixture?
Marcia?
Those are the lots, in large part, within the development. This is a development that was approved as part of a planned development in nineteen ninety, and there are internal sidewalks throughout the development.
Okay. So, so there are internal sidewalks throughout the development. This, this relates only to the sidewalks on the south side of, can you just circle?
Marcia?
Again, if you went throughout the development, you'd see on the frontage of many of the lots, there is not a sidewalk. Again, they've, they've provided, as you can see in the area, all these internal networks of sidewalks throughout the development.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Ms. Elkins, I'm still a little confused about the sidewalks. You say they have internal sidewalks, so they're, you drew a line. Does that mean they don't have sidewalks in front of their actual houses? Like where we traditionally have sidewalks?
There are street-side sidewalks here. I think the issue that was raised in the staff report, again, is on the north side. In this photograph, you can see it over here, where there are no lots.
Okay, so that's what they're wanting waived, just like where there's no?
No. Marcia?
Well, actually, and I'm not sure why the comment was added in the staff report, but that those sidewalks will be installed at the time. Building permits are issued for those lots. They may just not have shown them on the plans at the time of the subdivision.
Okay. And on these street size reductions, is that like a mute point, because the streets are already smaller than what they're supposed to be?
Marcia?
Yes. Maybe if I could just take a minute to go back and explain. Dakota Ridge was done for Defense Housing Corporation, which was to provide two hundred housing units that were very quickly built in nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety, to satisfy needs by the US Air Force. In that process, they did get a planned development approved. It was a very unique concept that was brought forward, and they were constructed very quickly. That was for a twenty-year lease. We're at the end of that lease period, and so now these lots are all being sold off independently. What happened was when they did the mortgage surveys, they realized that there were numerous encroachments. We did a pilot project, if you would, for that first area that you saw a few months ago, and now they've brought forward the rest of those units. And again, we've tried to accommodate the lot lines in the east months to address building locations as they exist today. Right-of-way widths as well.
Okay, so basically, we're talking about something that's already built, and we're trying to get it to fit into a certain picture?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is approval with stipulations, dealing with item one oh one. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Marcia, we need to take up item number sixty-eight now? Is that correct?
Correct, and we would recommend that be approved with stipulations.
Okay. Deb, could you please read in item number sixty-eight, please?
Easy one. Sixty-eight is a request of WIS Associates Incorporated
Sixty-eight is a request of WIS Associates Incorporated for Rapid City Defense Housing Corporation for preliminary plat located west of Campbell Street, south of, south of East Minnesota Street, and east of Elm Street, and I move approval, please.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Is that correct, Marcia?
Correct.
Item, we're dealing with item sixty-eight, item number sixty-eight. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. And I believe that takes us to the end of the continued public hearing items, so we're actually, need to make a motion to close the public hearing items, items ninety-eight through one eighteen inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the consent public hearing items. These are items one oh four through one thirteen. Do we need to have any of those pulled? If so, please turn on your light. We're dealing with one oh four through one thirteen. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
One oh six through one oh nine, please.
Six through one oh nine, very good. Any others that we need to be pulled from the consent calendar? And this is one oh four through one thirteen. Let's go to Pauline.
One thirteen, please.
One thirteen. Okay. Any others? Now, the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent public hearing items, items one oh four through one thirteen, with the exception of one oh six through one oh nine and item one thirteen. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let's see, that'll take us to item one oh six. Deb, if you'd please read that in.
One oh six is Walgreens, DBA Walgreens on Mount Rush, nineteen oh two Mount Rushmore Road for retail wine. Move approval?
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment, a statement to Walgreens that I support your efforts to sell wine and beer where, where your neighbors want it. And in both these locations, I've heard no, um, statements from people not wanting it. And I would also encourage Wal, uh, Walgreens to take seriously the responsibility to be a good neighbor and not to try to sell these products where their neighbors do not want them. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to ask our city attorney a question.
Sure, go ahead, please.
Jason, is it appropriate to continue items one oh six through one oh nine to after the executive session?
Yes, it is.
I'd like to offer a motion to continue items one oh six through one oh nine to after the executive session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue items one oh six, seven, eight, and nine until after the executive session. And so, we would actually, we'd actually take that up after one nineteen, or actually after executive session. Any discussion on that motion, on the continuation motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to item one thirteen. Deb, could you please read that in?
One nineteen?
One thirteen, please.
I'm sorry. One thirteen is approved resolution twenty-ten dash one eighteen, levy assessment of cleanup of miscellaneous property, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. Whoops. Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I just wanted to point out that the interest rate on this is five percent. Originally, the resolution said nine percent, but when the council voted to change the percent on the bid assessment for the downtown, that typically will change the percent charged for interest on any ensuing assessment projects.
Okay, very good.
Awesome.
See no further lights. All those in favor dealing with item one thirteen, which is approved the resolution, levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous properties. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing item calendar. We're on to the non-consent public hearing items, items one fourteen through one eighteen. Item one fourteen, please. Deb? Or is that Alderman Quaker? I'm sorry, Alderman Quaker.
Item one fourteen is a request by the city for special exceptions to the flood construction regulations located in Founder's Park yielded the floor.
Could we have a motion, please? Jerome, just was a motion for approval with stipulations? Okay.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Discussion on that motion. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to, let's go to, Sam, are you trying to turn your light on there? Are we still having problems? Okay, let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to voice a bit of a word of caution here, and I guess, uh, I'm, I'm just throwing out the word of caution that we should remember that, um, you know, this is a hundred-year flood plain and a fifty-year minor flood plain. And I guess I just wanted to throw out that, uh, whenever we're talking about flood exceptions, I've, I know throughout history, we say, you know, that was thirty, forty years ago, and it won't happen again, and in our minds, we may think that, but it can. And I just, uh, if, if I'm looking at this correctly and have been reading it correctly, I guess I just wanted to throw out that word of caution. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hecock.
I just, I just wondered what the exception was. I apologize. I, I was reading it earlier, and then when Jordan brought it up, what, what's going to be the exception here?
Marcia?
This is for temporary structures associated with the Fat Tire Festival. Um, again, that's being recommended for approval by the planning commission with similar stipulations, as you've placed on other similar activities, and those are listed on the cover page.
Thank you, Marcia. I, I apologize. I didn't read that ahead of time, so thank you very much, Marcia.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Marcia, the, the first flood plain development permit was denied because it didn't include certification from a registered professional engineer per the staff report. So, we do have, we do now have certification from a registered professional engineer?
No, that's why they're, that's why they're before you for the exception is that because these are temporary structures, they cannot meet those requirements. They can't be anchored. Um, and so you see the planning commission's recommendation, again, there's two stipulations that the event will be stopped and the structures removed if ordered by the police chief, fire chief, mayor, emergency management director, or the public works director, and that the structures be removed the evening after the event has ceased. And that's similar to what we've done throughout the park with these kinds of temporary structures.
So, is this similar to then how the city has handled Hills Live and the Heritage Festival?
Yes, it is.
Both basically exactly the same?
Very similar stipulation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bonnie Peterson.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Elkins, um, is this, I'm just wondering why this fat tire, is this, did they build these same structures this past time, or they're wanting to do something different?
Marcia?
Very similar structures, there are tents and the like that are located there at Founder's Park.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. One fifteen, please, Alderman Quaker.
Item one fifteen is to authorize a mayor and finance officer to sign a waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of curb gutter sidewalks through light conduit water sewer and additional pavement along Pioneer Circle as they abut the unplatted portion. This is located at seventy-six oh one Pioneer Circle. Recommendation is for approval, and that's my motion.
Second.
I'm sorry.
With stipulation, if there are any.
And on the warp.
There are, there are none on there. I'm sorry.
And on the warp.
Item one fifteen, uh, motion on the floor is for approval. And, and we have a second. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I just want to make just a general comment that I really do like those aerial photographs when we are considering these kind of issues. It really, uh, picture's worth a thousand words for me on that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. One sixteen, please.
Item one sixteen is a request by Dream Design International, Inc. for a variance to the subdivision regulations to reduce the pavement width from twenty-seven to twenty feet, and to waive the requirement to install curb gutter sidewalks through light conduit water and sewer along Pioneer Circle as per sixteen point one-sixth municipal code, located at seventy-six oh one Pioneer Circle. Move to approve with stipulations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with stipulations dealing with item one sixteen. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Elkins, again, the street reduction, uh, the pavement width, is this because it's already what we're dealing with, or is this to?
Marcia, pre-existing?
Not meet the criteria?
That's correct. This is an existing roadway that does not meet the requirements. The reason for the waiver of right to protest you just acted on was to allow that to be improved to city standards in the future, should it be within the city limits, and it could be assessed at that point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval dealing with, with stipulations dealing with item one sixteen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. One seventeen, please.
Item one seventeen is authorized mayor and finance officer to sign a waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of additional pavement curb gutter sidewalks through light conduit sewer and water along West Dankie Road as they abut the government lot four located in section eighteen at the intersection of Country Road and West Dankie Road. Recommendation is for approval, and that is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. One eighteen, please.
Item one eighteen is a request by Spurlock Consulting for Clint Ackerman for a variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install additional pavement, curb gutter sidewalk, through light conduit sewer and water along West Dankie Road per sixteen point one-sixth municipal code. This is located northeast of intersection of Country Road and West Dankie Road. Recommendation is to approve in part with stips and deny in part as per planning commission's recommendation, and that is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve in part with stipulations and deny in part per the planning commission's recommendations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Pauline, bill list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The total bill list before you is three million, nine hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-five cents, and then we do need to add a claim for Heavy Constructors, Inc. in the amount of six hundred and twenty-two dollars for a total amount of three million, nine hundred eleven dollars, four hundred and eighty, nine hundred eleven thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. Sorry.
Was that as amended? Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bill list as amended for a grand total of three million, nine hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Green, executive session.
Yes, and it will be for the purposes permitted by S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two.
Move to an executive session. Okay, we have a motion and a second to go in executive session for purposes permitted by S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're in executive session.
Okay, can we have a motion please? Come on to executive session.
Go ahead.
We have a motion, second and a discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Right to executive session. Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask the Council Director City Attorney to hire outside council for the personnel matter discussed. Funding source to be the council contingency and amount not to exceed $10,000.
Okay, we have a motion and second and a discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes.
I believe you have four items remaining on your agenda, Mayor.
That we do. Do we have to do those individually? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve items 106 through 109 inclusive. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. If we have a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
If we have a motion and second to adjourn, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone.